Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meet -- Anne, are you ready? I'm sorry. I gotta make sure we're recording. You're recording. I'd like to call this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council to order this Tuesday, July 7th, 2020. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just have a moment of silence in recognition of veterans and those that have passed specifically tonight. Our condolences go out to the family of Chief Petty Officer Harry N. Gustafson upon his passing on June 21st, 2020. Chief Petty Officer Gustafson served in the United States Navy during World War II, Korean War, and the Vietnam War, an accomplishment not completed by many. Our condolences also go out to the family of Donald F. Chartier upon his passing on June 19th, 2020. Mr. Chartier served in the European Theater of Operations in the United States Army during World War II. Our condolences also go out to the family of Charles H. Kent upon his passing on June 3rd, 2020. Mr. Kent served in Strategic Air Command, United States Air Force during the Vietnam War. Our condolences also go out to the family of Joseph Cap upon his passing June 19th, 2020. Mr. Cap served in combat operations in the 101st Airborne Division, United States Army, during the Korean War. And our condolences also go out to the family of James Sullivan upon his passing June 16th, 2020. Mr. Sullivan served the United States Army during the Vietnam War. Our condolences also go out to the family of Dr. Diana Draheem upon her passing on June 3rd, 2020. She was a professor of early childhood education at Bridgewater State University from 1973 until her retirement in 1996. She was a member of both the Bridgewater Improvement Association and the Poodle Club of America Rescue Foundation, and very active in Bridgewater's civic activities over the years, and a mentor to many in numerous international students. Thank you. I just want to remind everybody that this meeting is being held pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law under Mass General R. Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There will be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune into the meeting may do so via Facebook Live. And this meeting is being recorded and aired live on the -- on Facebook. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting of June 23rd, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second. Any discussion?
President, I'll be abstaining because I wasn't here.
This does require a roll call vote, as all our votes tonight do require a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against?
Thank you. I have two announcements tonight. The first announcement is, I just would like to read something that was initially read into the record, I believe, back in 2015 or 2016. It's a proclamation that the town of Bridgewater presents the proclamation in support of the Bridgewater citizens for civility and respect. Whereas Bridgewater, established in 1656, is a town with a diverse population of over 27,000 residents that has enjoyed a strong tradition of civil rights in which hate speech is not tolerated. Whereas the citizens of Bridgewater have long upheld a tradition of respect which guarantees civil rights for all. Whereas incidents of hate speech and verbal assaults directed at individuals because of their appearance or clothing choice, which reflects particular cultures, is in direct opposition with the traditions and values of this town. Whereas the town of Bridgewater respects the rights of all persons in our town to live without fear of verbal or physical assaults and exercise freedom of cultural expression through choice of attire, religious practice, and speech. Be it resolved that the town of Bridgewater, Massachusetts, has declared a community of civility where intolerant speech and behavior are unacceptable, thus ensuring that our town remains a respectful place to live, work, attend school, visit, and conduct business. I think it's fitting that we read this from time to time, particularly in this particular time in our -- in our country. The second order of business tonight is time to reorganize the board. I've held on to the presidency long enough, I guess. So I will now turn it over to our town clerk, Merrily Kenny Hunt.
Thank you. Good evening, citizens, and good evening, council. And I will just -- I've congratulated them once already, but I congratulate your two new members tonight, Councilors George and Wood. The first thing we're going to do to reorganize is to open nominations from the screen for -- we call you president, don't we? President? I can't remember, the president or chairman.
Yes. Yes. I nominate Mr. George for the president of the council.
Second.
Okay, we have a nomination and a second. Do I hear any other nominations from the screen? Hearing none and seeing no action toward none, I will call for a roll call vote.
Could I just have a little discussion on that?
Oh, certainly.
No, I just want to say, Mr. George has done a great job as the vice president this past year, and he's fully qualified and, you know, I have all the confidence in the world in him in doing a great job moving forward this year as the president. So I'm happy. And he didn't decline the nomination, so I'm happy accepting it.
Thank you, councilor. Counselor Gallagher, were you the second?
Counsel Rushton. I just concur with what Counsel Fitzgibbon said.
Are there any other counselors who would like to make a comment? Counselor Gallagher?
No, just looking forward to working with Sean in this coming year.
Okay. With that presumption, let's take a roll call vote if we wouldn't.
Mr. Fitzgibbons? Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against?
Now I will turn it over to President George to run the nominations for vice president.
Thank you very much. And I just want to say thank you, everyone, for the -- on the town council for the support. What I'd like to do is entertain a motion for vice president, nomination for vice president. Mr. Gallagher?
Mr. George, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to put the name Counselor Large Matt Rushton for vice president.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion for Counselor Gallagher, and there's a second. Do I have any other nominations? Hearing none, I will call for a vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against?
Congratulations, Counselor Rushton.
All right. Thank you very much.
So, everyone, bear with me. I've run these meetings before, but now officially I have to run them, so it's a little bit more pressure. It is now 7:10. We have two hearings that I believe we need to--
Well, George, could I interrupt? I think we need to reseat people.
Oh, okay. You know what? I'm used to doing that in a room with the card, so--
I know. I know. I got a whole new system for you. This is a whole new time.
Oh, boy.
What I'm going to do is -- I made some cards. I think they're all colored, so you can see them and read them. On the back of each card is the number of a seat, and the seats are numbered from number one, where currently Counselor Souza sits. They're skipping four and five, which are for the president and vice president, and then continuing on the other side. So in alphabetical order, I'm going to call counselors' names, and you will pick a color, and that will be your new seat. Does that sound fair? Okay. All right. So Counselor Chase?
I would select green.
Green. I'm just hoping I didn't stick them on so hard that they don't come off. You are in seat number seven. Number seven, that'll be -- you'll figure it out. Counselor Columbotus?
I'll take blue.
That is seat number two.
Thank you.
Counselor Fitzgibbons?
Pink, please.
You are in seat number one. I think you're trading with Mr. Souza.
Excellent. I get a corner again. Solid.
Counselor Gallagher?
I'll take purple. Is that a color up there? Yeah, it is, yeah.
It is a color. It is a color here. And it is seat number nine.
Nine.
I think you're trading with Counselor Fitzgibbons, right?
Nine.
Okay. Who are we next up to? Counselor Loesch?
I will pick orange, I think.
And that is seat number eight. Close to where you already are. I can't remember. And Counselor Souza? Have I missed somebody?
No, you got Souza and Wood, and that's it. Yeah.
Okay, Souza and Wood, that's right. Okay.
I'll take red.
Nobody wants to say the word white. Okay, red is number three.
I just wanted to break gender roles.
I noticed that, too. Number three.
And it's just like grade school, right? So I'm always the last one. And I'll take magenta.
And you are in number six.
We sing six, yeah. There you go.
It's easy to remember. All right. Now, President George, I will turn it completely over to you and mute myself.
Thank you very much. All righty. So the time is 7:13, so I'm going to go to the hearings that we have scheduled. They were supposed to start at 7:05. So our first hearing is an alteration -- excuse me, council petition P. 2020-013, alteration of license premise restaurant, all alcohol beverage license, Riviera Cafe. So first, and bear with me, because I have my iPad, so I'll try to scan, is the petitioner here? I don't see anyone for the petitioner, so I'd like to turn it over to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations. This is a petition to expand, essentially expand, the service area on the exterior to accommodate additional seats. This is currently allowed under the temporary COVID regulations, but the RIVF would like to make this permanent. Their -- the area would be enclosed, 32 by 15, additional deck added to the back. They'd lose one parking space. They'd have additional three picnic tables to accommodate 24 additional seats.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Are there any general questions from the public? I do not see any. Is there anyone from the public here speaking in favor of the petition? Okay. I don't see anyone. Is there anyone in the public speaking in opposition? Okay. I don't see anyone. Are there any questions from the town counselors?
Mr. George?
Yes, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Mr. Dutton, the police and fire departments are good with losing this one parking spot and the safety and access they'll have?
Correct. They are fine with that.
Thank you.
Counselor Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just curious whether -- it was not clear to me from the diagram as to whether the expanded proposed outdoor seating area would be contiguous with the existing outdoor seating area. And I'm curious whether there would be an additional entrance into the outdoor seating, the expanded outdoor seating area.
Great question. It is contiguous to the current outdoor patio, and I do not believe that there is any additional entrance or egress to the new piece. I believe you have to access it from the current outdoor patio.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from any counselors? Okay. So I'll be closing the hearing at 7:17. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay. It's been motioned in second. Any discussion? Counselor Wood?
I'm not sure the protocol. I guess raising the hand works. I was on the council years ago when the RIVF came before the council and proposed the first outside patio. And there was a little bit of concern with the neighbors there at that point, but I think they've run that space very well. The change in the restaurant over the years has been very positive to the neighborhood. I haven't heard one complaint over the years about the restaurant itself or the parking or any activity there. So I will be voting in favor of this. I think it's--
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, this will need a roll call vote.
Sorry, I took a minute to unmute myself. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton? Mr. Rushton? I can't hear you. Was that a yes, no? Yes, thank you. Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against?
And by the way, the council clerk did a great job getting all the seats reorganized for herself on that vote.
Thank you.
All righty. The time is 7:19, so I will be starting petition P. 2020-014. Poll location, new intermediate, P. 58-50, in between P. 58 and P. 59, Elm Street. Is the petitioner present for this? All right. I don't see anyone raising the hand for the petitioner, so I'll turn it over to the town manager.
Thanks, Mr. President. This is a fairly routine poll placement. It is to accommodate a new building on Elm Street, specifically at 1030 Elm Street. And so I would encourage the council to approve the poll location.
Thank you. Are there any general questions from the public? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone in the public speaking in favor? Anyone speaking in favor? Okay, seeing none. Is anyone from the public speaking in opposition? Okay, seeing none. Any questions from the town counselors?
Mr. George?
Yes, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Mr. Dutton, is this part of the ongoing revamp of Elm Street that we're doing and just another needed thing we need to do?
This is actually something different than the reconstruction of Elm Street. This is actually a new poll that accommodates a new building in the industrial end of Elm Street. So it is obviously all part of Elm Street improvement, but -- and development, but it is not part of our--
I like the sound of new building, as long as it's not a house.
All righty. Any other questions from the counselors? Okay, I will close the meeting at 7:21, and it's saying a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any discussion? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against?
Thank you. All right. Taking care of that, I will move on to item D in the agenda, citizens' open forum. What I'd like to do before we open that up, I just like to remind people for citizens' open forum, we ask all citizens to keep to a three-minute time limit. We love to hear comments. We love to hear feedback per council tradition, but also what we have to follow in regards to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. We cannot engage in debate or discussion. A lot of times from these, we will have people follow up with the town council, the town manager, a combination of that. But I just like to remind people about that, just so if you're asking questions and we don't respond, it's specifically for those guidelines. That being said, I will open it up for a citizen's -- also as a reminder, before you speak, if you could state your name and address for the record. With that, I'd like to open it up for a citizens' open forum.
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Yes.
I had somebody reach out to me. Mark Lindy would like to speak.
Mr. Lindy, you're up.
Good evening, counselors. I just wanted to express my thanks for all of your collegiality during my short tenure on the town council. I appreciate everything you do, and I know how hard the work is. And just letting you know, I'll still be around. I won't be in one of those reshuffled seats, but I will certainly stay active in the town of Bridgewater. And I just want to thank you all for your confidence in me when you appointed me to the seat. And congratulations to Mr. Wood.
I thought I saw Mr. Baumgarten. Mr. Baumgarten?
Yes, hi, thank you. I just wanted to share a good news--
Mr. Baumgarten? Name and address, please?
Yes, thank you. Sam Baumgarten, 60 Short Street. I just wanted to share a good news anecdote to the council and those who are here tonight. Two weeks ago in my backyard, my older daughter got married, which was a very exciting day for us. As you know, Short Street is a little bit like I-95 for the last few years, with both Bridgewater Preserve and now the Ducksborough Estates. We have trucks going by all the time. So my wife took a ride over to Ducksborough Estates and asked the truck foreman if he could stop the truck traffic for the day. And he very kindly rerouted the traffic. I apologize to those on Walnut Street. But anyway, we had a thoroughly quiet day, thanks to the cooperation of SLT Trucking. And I just wanted to share that with everybody.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' open forum?
Mr. Moore? Mr. George, Mr. Moore?
You muted yourself, Sean. There you go.
I didn't mute myself. Mr. Moore?
Could you unmute? Hi, David Moore, 54 Flag Street, Chairman of the Historical Commission. Historical Commission has had some concerns about the rehab of the Memorial Building. We are very much in favor of seeing the exterior of that building put back into usable condition as soon as possible. We're very much in favor of the handicap access improvements, but we are very concerned about the changes being made inside the building. Recently, the Historical Commission was included on the Memorial Building Ad-Hoc Committee. There was a meeting of that committee at 3 o'clock on Thursday. I hope a couple of the councils can make that meeting so you can hear our concerns. And I'd like to leave it at that.
Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' open forum? Anne, I don't see anyone. Do you?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. We do not have any appointments, do not have any licensed transactions. Moving to item H, presentations, we have a presentation from the Bridgewater Citizen for Civility and Respect.
There'll be three of us speaking tonight, myself and Shirley Phillips and Steve Black will each speak briefly. I want to begin by saying thank you very much for including BCCR on your agenda. It's been several months since we shared some information and thoughts with you, and we're glad to have the opportunity again. And thanks, of course, for reading the proclamation, a useful reminder about civil discourse at these meetings. Speaking on behalf of BCCR, we have come before you tonight with some requests, requests which challenge you as our town leaders to help Bridgewater move forward toward a more inclusive, diverse, and equitable community. By the way, we shared these requests with Mr. Dutton in an email earlier this week. We do this humbly and in no way suggesting that we have all the answers, or that we do not recognize the quality, capability, and compassion of our town employees. This is a time of ferment, both nationally and locally. Since its establishment in 2016, BCCR has been active in defending the rights of all persons and standing up against incidents of hate. But there are now two other groups in town with several hundred Facebook members that have similar goals: DICE, Diversity and Inclusion for Community Empowerment, which leans toward education and school-based concerns, and Stand Up for Justice, which has organized the recent rallies on the Common and is devoted toward giving voice to people of color. So clearly, there is energy building in this town, and this is the time to act. Before stating our request, I wanted to share some words with you from a book called Me and White Supremacy by Leila Saad. It's a 28-day program to confront racism. On day 23, she talks about leaders, particularly white leaders, as participants in the anti-racist movement. I'm paraphrasing a bit of what she says here. "It behooves you to jump in, learn more, speak out, and carry the energy forward. Your voice carries weight. You create or influence policies and practices. It's hard and potentially uncomfortable work, but this is the time to step up and recognize the burden, oppression, and marginalization that people of color have dealt with their whole lives." that people of color have dealt with their whole lives. When you see and hear the voices of change coming from our town common, you must, as Saad says, roll up your sleeves and get down into the ugly fertile dirt. She concludes, this is not about promises, they're too easy to break. She suggests that you pledge, in big letters, commitments and take actions on those commitments. So that brings me to our first request, which is the signing of the anti-racism pledge, which is up on our Civility and Respect website, and making the commitment. There are five things on the pledge. One is to educate yourselves on issues of racial justice, show sensitivity in the use of any racist stereotypes, display courage in the presence of racial injustice, call out racism where and when it occurs, and support public policies that promise racial equity. We hope that you would consider signing as individuals or perhaps even making a declaration as a council to sign the pledge. And now I'm going to ask Shirley Phillips, who's my co-chair of B C C R, to make the second request. Unmute yourself, Shirley.
Hey, let me see. Oops, I lost you.
You got it.
Yep, Shirley, you're unmuted.
Okay. Thank you, I'm Shirley Phillips of 682 High Street. On behalf of B C C R, I come to you with a second ask. Should there be a board or committee established by the council to provide oversight in the areas of inclusion, diversity, and equity? Such an oversight board might be charged with looking at town policies, procedures, municipal codes, and hiring practices, and et cetera. In particular, given the fact that policing practices have been in the public eye, we want to make sure that our police department, while held high esteem by most people in Bridgewater, is operating at a high level of equity and transparency. We were all pleased with the detailed letter written by Chief Del Monte describing the extensive training undertaken by our police officers, but it would still be useful and will build trust if we could see statistics on use of force, complaints against officers, and whether or not there are indiscriminately practices in routine traffic stops. Are people of color stopped more than white people? And we need to examine hiring requirements and find ways to diversify the police department as well as the fire department to reflect the changing demographics of Bridgewater. Bridgewater is now just 82% white, yet no black police or fire persons are employed.
Thank you, Shirley. And I just wanted to add to Shirley's comments about creating some type of an oversight board. Malden, the city of Malden, has just come up with a plan called Unite Malden 2020. And among their proposals from the mayor's office is that they are declaring racism a public health crisis. They're instituting a police department community review board. They're funding a full-time director of equity, inclusion, and community engagement. They're creating a 3-2-1 diversity and hiring initiative, which sets certain numbers for minority members in the pool of applicants. They're also recognizing Juneteenth as a holiday. And Sunday's Globe had a notice that the city of Salem is forming a racial equity task force. So there's certainly a lot of action around the Commonwealth in creating such boards. And I'm going to, and oh yes, the B R School District, by the way, as many of you know, has just established a similar committee to focus on diversity and inclusion in the schools. So I'm going to let Steve Black make our third request. Steve?
Hi, my name's Steve Black, 145 Leggie Street. And this time that we're going through, it really is a time of learning and listening. Something my wife tells me I don't do often enough, but what would really help us to understand more of what's going on is to have a session with people of color that would talk about their experiences in Bridgewater. And it's just as we're going forward with this, we need to get some kind of a baseline. We need to just be able to see and hear what it is that's going on in our town. Something like this would just have so much value to black, white, and everyone in our community. So there are a number of area towns that have done something like this. I believe one of them is the town of Needham. We'd be glad to share a link with the councilors that would show them just how they did that. And I hope that you will entertain this and be able to get this set up. Just want to thank you for your time, your consideration, and for your prompt response on this. Thank you, folks.
Yeah, I'll just wrap it up for us and say that this is a lot of stuff to throw at you, but having seen many of you at recent standouts, I know that your hearts are in it. As many have said, this truly seems to be a turning point in the effort to abolish racism in America. And while Bridgewater is only one small piece of America's fabric, we can make a difference right here. So I urge you to be more than just allies or supportive bystanders, but to really plunge in to help bring about change. So I appreciate your attention, and I'm very much looking forward to your debate and your response to these comments and requests. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any, are there any questions from the councilors before we move on? Okay, seeing none.
Mr. George, it was hard for me to get my camera on because I'm using a bad computer. No, I just want to, I just want to say thank you. And, you know, if we could get the document over and all the documentation, at least I'd love to read all of the things that you were talking about in different cities and towns. And Sam, you can just, you have my email, you use it often enough. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll send to everybody.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Any other questions from any other councilors? I'd just like to say thank you to the entire group, both the presenters and everyone involved with B C C R. Any group that looks to improve our community, I will absolutely support and look forward to continued work. Thank you very much. All righty, moving on to the town manager's report. I will be turning it over for a streamlined, very straightforward report from the town manager, Mr. Dutton.
All right, here is a very straightforward report. Thank you, Mr. President. On a couple of the standing items, I don't have a whole lot to report. The Mitchell School, obviously, the demo contractor has been engaged. They're right now, before they start the major work, awaiting written confirmation from Columbia Gas that the natural gas has been shut off. We know it has been, but they are required to get a written confirmation of that. We are, the architect rather, is working on the 90% drawings now through August, and the submission of the 90% drawings to the MSBA will be on August 28th. The 100% construction drawings are scheduled to be completed in October. And then obviously, we will go out to bid October, November, award in December, and begin construction very shortly thereafter. All designed to culminate in a July 2022 completion date. Project continues to be on budget. As you all know, because I say it every meeting, we are at $80 million, $600,000 appropriation. A portion of that is paid, majority of that is paid by the town, and then a portion of that, a percentage of that, is, is paid by the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority. We do have the meeting, MS, sorry, the Mitchell School Building Committee has a meeting next Monday, July 13th. And anybody that wants additional information is certainly welcome to visit the website dedicated to the school project, which is called www.bridgewaterschoolproject, all one word, bridwaterschoolproject.com. And that is what I have on the Mitchell School. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton?
At this point, Mr. Dutton answers my questions before I ask them, so I'm good.
It's, by the time this building is finished, I will be able to answer all the questions before they're ever asked. On the 21 revenue versus budget, we've put this on as a standing item because I think the council knows that we'll be following and tracking this very carefully this year, unlike, you know, other quote-unquote "normal" years. We'll do a weekly dive into the revenues versus our budgeted revenues. I can tell you, there's not too much new info on this. The revised budget to actual receipts or revenues for May and June were pretty roughly on target, if not slightly better than we had projected, which is good news. And, but obviously, we are down from our FY '20 levels, which is, I think, understandable. We will continue to monitor all the telltale signs that we are currently monitoring, including tax bills, examine the days outstanding, and that gives us a much better idea of where we'll be tracking. So the next, next quarterly will be critical. At that point, we suspect that the additional unemployment benefits will, will be coming to an end. And there is no talk, at least, about any kind of additional stimulus. So hopefully, we're, well, we are seeing a rebound in, in the employment rate, which is a good sign. But, but we'll have to wait and see how the, the other items or the other receipts and revenues track. Over probably the next month will give us a better idea. So that is what I have there. Happy to answer any questions on that one.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Any word from Beacon Hill, Mr. Dutton?
We did get our state rep on the phone last week. He said there's been absolutely no talk of, of any kind on a FY '21 budget, which is disappointing, but, but that's not a whole lot we can do about it other than make, certainly the council can make its opinions known. I think there's something on the agenda tonight to that end. So nothing, nothing yet from Beacon Hill.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on.
CARES Act and FEMA funding, we, nothing, we have not done another submission after our last one at, at the close of last month, or towards the end of last month. We did, our submission was reviewed by Plymouth County. They asked for a number of different informational items and clarifications and receipts and so forth, all of which were provided. And as a reminder, we're looking for CARES, CARES, Plymouth County CARES Act funding reimbursements of 100, just shy of $115,000, and we're looking to FEMA for about $287,000 to cover the expenses we incurred from the implementation of the state's, state of emergency and the town state of emergency through the end of the fiscal year. So those two are outstanding. We anticipate receiving both of those, but it doesn't come without plenty of paperwork. So that's, that's what I have on that one.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton? Mr. Dutton, I do, I do have one, and I brought this up last, last meeting, and just if we can get an update as well. So we had a quick discussion, I believe it was during the council meeting, about not being able to recoup expenses to maintain the golf course during the state mandated closure. And I know that Tony had mentioned maybe doing a little bit more investigative work. So I don't know if, if anything's transpired for that, but in all honesty, I, I don't understand, you know, how we don't qualify under CARES if we're required to close a facility, a town-owned facility, but yet we still have to maintain the facility in order to use it. So I don't know if you have any update, or maybe you can include it in the, in the next meeting's update.
I will include that. I think this is probably also going to be a standing item. But to answer your question, I don't have, I don't have anything additional on that. But other than to say, and everybody should understand, that CARES will not, will not reimburse lost revenue on, on any level. So that's, that's sort of the, the broad constraint that we have to live with. And, and I think, as certainly the Budget and Finance Committee members know, we were couching our argument that we still had to maintain an asset and that that would be reimbursable. So I don't, I don't have an update on that one just yet.
Okay. And if I said revenue, I meant to say the expenses of keeping up the asset, not the revenue. Okay. All right, Broad Street Project.
Broad Street Project, the applicant had, this was Counselor Georgia's question. The, the applicant has submitted the required items for planning board review, and my understanding is that that will be scheduled now for the August meeting. It does include the developers' agreement that's been bone of contention for, for a number of months now. But it does appear that everything is in place. And I'm meeting with the Community and Economic Development Director, I believe tomorrow or the next day, just to go over anything that might, might still be outstanding, but I don't believe there is. So that, that is overall good news. We'd love to be able to get that project going and clean up Broad Street substantially with this project. So that's what I have on that one.
Mr. Dutton, is it your understanding that the, the submission is going to be for both sides of Broad Street? The whole project or a portion of it?
The submission will be for the entire, for, I believe it's forebuilding project. And I believe it includes the designation of the piece, well, yeah, the forebuilding project and then the vacant lot, which, which I believe is to be used for parking. So that answers your question.
Great, thank you.
Mr. George?
Yep, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I just want to clarify because we use different tenses there. The submission will be, or the submission is, because I heard the town manager say we have a submission. So it shouldn't be a future tense, it should be, this is what it is.
I stand corrected and I correct my tense. It is.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, moving on to power failure at Academy Building.
I think I had, I just, I'll add a little more than I reported, I think, I think back in March or February. I reported a little bit on this, but let me dive a little deeper. We did have a power failure, I think, as people do remember, back in February during one of the few storms that we experienced last winter. And during that storm, our IT director got a notification that, that the public safety server had gone down. And I won't get into details, but on that one, but that's, we have a pretty robust notification system, which is, is quite helpful. Obviously, much of the town, if, if not all, I believe much of the town had, had experienced a power outage during that same storm. But the, the problem was that the Academy Building generator generated a trouble code, which, which indicated that there was some sort of fail to start. And so Brad, our IT director, went over in the late afternoon. He was able to reset the generator and start it, got things up and going. But, but clearly, clearly, that's not the way it's supposed to work. So South Shore Generator came in, replaced several parts that needed replacing, and, and we now have a perfectly operational generator. We also signed on for a annual maintenance and response agreement with South Shore so that we won't, won't have that issue again. So, so that, that's a little bit of the new, new piece on the, on that piece. So I don't know if there are any questions on that one.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton?
What parts had to be replaced?
Um, I am not positive about which parts had to be replaced. I can certainly find out. There is probably, my guess is there are a switch, something within the generator that switches the thing on when, when it detects a power failure. But, but I can, I can certainly find out.
Was there a problem with the batteries?
I believe, actually, I think they did replace the batteries. And the batteries are there to start the. And the batteries are there to start the generator itself. The batteries aren't there to supply the building with power, just so people are clear.
I know. Shouldn't that maintenance of that piece of equipment in the past included those types of things? And if so, who was in charge of maintenance? Isn't that part of the building maintenance?
That is part of building maintenance. And so it is now South Shore generator that will be checking that on a regular basis, quarterly basis.
Okay, so it really happened because it wasn't being checked by anybody? Not South Shore, not a town employee, or an individual who's in charge of maintenance of our buildings? No one had a schedule of actually going there and checking on those things?
Well, they did have a schedule. They would check mostly the fuel. The fuel was checked. It was run, it had been run, and it continues to get run on a weekly basis. I believe it's Tuesdays, Tuesday mornings, and had fired up perfectly up until the time that it was actually needed. So I wouldn't, I'm going to guess that the battery probably was not checked on a routine basis, but certainly the fuel was checked and the log where the thing goes off on a test basis every week was checked. But luckily, it won't happen again, knock on wood, because we'll have the South Shore generator doing regular maintenance and an analysis of it.
Right, but is this typical of the maintenance program that we have? Wait till something happens and then jump in?
I think it's safe to say that's been the case for years, decades. And we've struggled on a gradual basis over the last number of years to try to sign, you know, try to get maintenance agreements. We have maintenance agreements for the Academy Building, obviously. We had dropped a lot of maintenance agreements in the old days when we had had, you know, serious financial troubles, and that unfortunately was the wrong thing to do. The police station is a good example of that. We dropped a number of maintenance agreements there, and it caused, you know, significant problems with HVAC over the course of the following years. So it's all a matter of money. It's, as I've said many times, it's a priority for me. And certainly, when we invest money in any capital right now, specifically buildings, if we don't have the money to do what's necessary to fund the follow-up regular maintenance, then we're not going to spend the money to do the capital improvement. So it's a challenge, quite honestly, it's a challenge for us. And we, you know, we live within the budgets. And we do budget some money for building maintenance, but not nearly enough.
Did you appoint someone as someone who's supposed to be overseeing the maintenance or performing some of the maintenance, a current town employee who, for some reason, needed extra hours to fulfill his forty-hour duty, and he was given this position?
We have, we've been, I think, as you know, as the council knows, we've been advertising for facilities and asset manager. And we've been not, we haven't found anyone that we can actually afford for the work that needs to be done. So we have asked our plumbing inspector to step in. And he does, as over and above his normal job, he does do some of the routine improvements and repairs that need to be made in all the buildings. So he's been quite helpful, but that's an interim assignment, and it's certainly not designed to be the long-term solution.
Okay, now I just was wondering if there was some kind of a schedule, and I guess the answer was no. Thank you.
Any other questions for the town manager? Great, seeing none, capital plan, sidewalk improvement.
We have, I think, I think council probably remembers, we did a thorough analysis of the sidewalk, both sidewalk and streets. With StreetScan, we continue to utilize that program to make adjustments and make decisions about, you know, what streets and to focus on, what sidewalks to focus on. Quite frankly, we know, we had a number of items in the capital plan for your consideration. COVID came along, and we put the brakes on all but the items that were absolutely necessary for whatever reason that might be. And so that is, that is sort of where we stand with the capital plan. We have submitted a complete streets grant application to make improvements to the crossings and the sidewalks on both Main and Broad. And we'll see where we come out on that. I'm hopeful that we will be able to secure some of those funds to make those improvements. We also will be starting engineering for the flag, Flag Street and Cross Street drainage and overall improvements within the next month to a month and a half. And so those, at least, will be engineered. But aside from that, as I mentioned, the capital plan is essentially on hold for, you know, until we really can assess our, assess the overall impact of COVID on our financial stability. So I wish I could give you, you know, better news on certainly sidewalks, because I think there are sidewalks, all roads and sidewalks, all over town that need substantial improvements. But that's where we stand right now.
All right, any questions for the town manager? All right, seeing none, moving to central fire station search update.
I'm happy to report, we do have a consultant on board and a contract signed with a consultant. And we are meeting with some of the committee members this week to sort of kick off that process. It'll be a relatively short process, probably run somewhere in the neighborhood of four to five months. And so out of that, we will come up with site feasibility. We'll come up with program, proposed program for the building. So site for the building, program for the building or buildings, if it makes more sense to do something other than one building. And then also schematic design based upon those first two items. So we're actually getting a great bang for the buck on this. And quite honestly, I anticipated that it was going to cost us a little more to get through schematic design phase. But we've got a great architect and who has a ton of experience doing fire stations and police stations. And so that's where we are on this one.
All right, any questions for the town manager?
Mr. George?
Mr. Colin Bodis?
Yeah, I can't get my video to work, so sorry, I can't raise my hand.
I was looking for you, I didn't see you, so I apologize.
Through you, to Mr. Dutton. Mr. Dutton, how does the design of a building not depend on the site we choose for that building? Or I'm just wondering how we're able to go ahead with schematics and conceptual plans of the building when we don't know where it's going to be?
Well, I think the first order of business is to identify the appropriate site or sites. So, yeah, you're correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Gallagher?
So, thank you, Mr. George. So where are we with the site selection? If this process is going to take less than five months, and, you know, unless it's town-owned land, the process of acquiring land can take several months, as you know. So I just, my question would be, how close are we of identifying the site?
Good question. I think there are a lot of people that sit on the committee that have an idea for where the site should be. But that's one of the reasons that we hire the consultant to actually go through a process which identifies the feasible site. So that's his first order of business. And so that'll occur, at least, a process to be able to select a site will occur right off the bat.
Will there be any role of the council to approve the site? Or is that within the realm of your authority and the committee's authority?
No, I think the council absolutely needs to be engaged with site, you know, making. The committee will recommend a site based upon the work that the consultant does and the feasibility work that happens. But then ultimately, that's council decision about the site, how to fund it. Obviously, we'll give you some ideas and recommendations for both the site and the funding. But that's ultimately a council decision.
Thank you.
Counselor Wood?
Thank you. I'm going to ask you a specific question. You may have to say you don't know or can't say, but I heard rumor that one of the sites being considered is the corner of Hale and Plymouth Street. So while that's great for District Six, because it's right there, in my personal opinion, it seems very close to Fire Station Two and causes some issues with the railroad tracks, et cetera. So is that a site that's being seriously considered among possibly?
There's, I would say, there are many sites being considered for many pieces of our department, our fire department. And that's essentially specifically why we engaged a professional to be able to guide us through a very, what could be for us, a very difficult site selection process. Because as Counselor Wood points out, there's, you know, we have train tracks that basically split the town in two. Those are issues for our fire department and police department, but more so the fire department. So we have to walk through exactly, you know, what criteria we're going to use. You know, and the call volumes, the areas where calls are coming from, all of those are digested by the consultant. And so that they give us a pretty detailed idea of where the optimum location would be based upon our current populations, our current call volume, our, you know, future developable land areas and all of that. So it's a long process. The university, I don't think it's any secret, the BSU owns or controls the property at the corner of Plymouth and Hale, and they've been very, I won't say very vocal, but they've been very willing to have a discussion about, you know, something that we may be able to do jointly on that piece of property. So these are, you know, these are all ideas and nothing more than just ideas. So essentially, one of the main reasons we engage a consultant on projects like this is to make sure that we walk through a rational, logical process in as clear and efficient a manner as possible. So that's what we intend to do. But a short answer to your question, counselors, no. That certainly nothing has been decided about any piece of property. There have been, you know, idle chit-chat discussions about that particular property as well as other properties. But we'll leave it to the feasibility study.
Any other questions from any counselors? Okay, seeing none, parking lot, striping, commercial property owners.
I know this has come up before on a couple of the pharmacies in town. But I guess I would, what I would say here is that if there are areas or commercial businesses that are obviously in need of restriping, then the best thing to do is let let our, let me, if it's counselors, let me know which they are. And I'll be happy to have our building official reach out and try to encourage those businesses to restripe. I really are only, and I think I've mentioned this before, our only real enforcement action on restriping is to find a violation of the planning board's approved site plan. And then, you know, go through a fine process after that. But obviously, we're more inclined to make a much more friendly request to property owners just to simply repaint. So I would ask if there's anybody that, or any property that's obviously in need of restriping, then let me know, and I'll have Steve reach out.
Okay, Counselor Colin Bodis, you brought this, do you have any questions? Because I still can't see you.
Yeah, I just, I just can't, I understand we want to be friendly to business. We don't want to be hostile to business. We want to encourage them to come to invest their private capital in our town. But that doesn't mean, I'd just like to state that I don't think that means we need to knuckle under and beg them to, you know, conform to our zoning regulations. These striping requirements are there for public safety, to ensure that cars don't run into one another, one coming in, one going out. So I understand, you know, we don't want to be aggressive or hostile or rude to businesses, but they do need to understand that, you know, they got a building, you know, site plan approval on the basis of striping, and that striping should be maintained. I just don't see why this is a problem. So I would just urge the town manager to perhaps strike a more insistent, firmer tone with private property owners in this regard.
Any other questions on this?
Mr. George?
Yes, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yeah, well, I don't disagree with Mr. Colin Bodis. I would say that, you know, we may be looking at the moat in our neighbor's eye when we don't see the beam in our own, and we've got a lot of work to do on striping roads.
Good point.
Yeah, so any other questions? I will say this, Mr. Dutton, and I'm going to agree with Mr. Colin Bodis, just for the mere fact, probably the last two weeks, waiting to go into the center of town on Plymouth Street and actually stopping on the line to allow traffic in and out of the parking lot for Walgreens and such. If you, if anyone were to be there and observe what goes on there, there's definitely a need for striping for the mere fact of being able to identify cars intent on when they're pulling out. And I think to Counselor Colin Bodis's point, I don't think we should wait until, God forbid, there's something happens and there was the need for that. I think we can implore them to at least give some consideration into the needs around the safety versus identifying parking spots and things of that nature. I'm really not as much trying to figure out. But entering and exiting, especially a high-traffic area, even though not required per se, I would agree, I'd like to see them compelled to do it by the mere fact of just safety. Okay, next item, diversity and inclusion training.
So I think it's probably a good follow-up, at least a good timing to follow up after BCC R gave a presentation. But I just, I do want to point out what we actually do in terms of diversity inclusion training. Number one, over, I think, I think it's, I've mentioned this before, over the last probably four years or so, perhaps longer, we've really put a lot of time and effort into our hiring process. And everybody, you know, if you've been involved in the municipal world at all, the hiring process can be arguably a bit of a joke. And we have, really, thanks to Kim Williams, the Assistant Town Manager, we've really taken our hiring process, completely revamped it. It's now a blind process based on qualifications. We have made the interview process sometimes lengthy, but always extremely thorough. And I think the good part is that we've hired some really, really good people over the past couple of years, three, four years. So I'm impressed with that. It does work. When you hire a municipal employee and you're responsible for that hire, you have to understand that that person comes, and they may be in that position for thirty-two years. So it's not, it's not a casual approach. We don't use a casual approach. It's important. We want people that want to be in Bridgewater and want to participate. We want people that want to be in Bridgewater and want to participate and want to be part of what we think is something really good going on. So that, that, that's probably one of the best changes we've made that, that relates to sort of a diverse workplace, an inclusionary workplace. Aside from that, we, we also, we require annual harassment and diversity training for all our employees. And certainly, our police department has, has significantly more training just by virtue of the nature, virtue and the nature of the, of the work that they do. So they are, they're well-trained. All our employees are required to go through training, as I said, police department is, is required to, to go through more. That's, that's a choice that we make, that's, that's a commitment that we make for, for having an accredited police department. So we do, and I think the, sort of on an overarching level, we continue to stress, and I do it all the time, stress a professional work environment, which respects all employees and certainly all members of the public. And I ask, I've asked that of, of our volunteer boards and committees, and I've asked that certainly with the people that, that work in our buildings. So, so that's, that's sort of what we've done so far. I have no doubt that there's room, plenty of room for us to do a lot more, and quite frankly, the BCCR has been quite helpful in, in guiding some of our, some of our decision making in, in those terms. So I'd certainly look forward to continuing to work with the group.
Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I, this was actually the only thing I could put on the agenda since I was an elect and today's my first official meeting. But I, I asked, I asked the Council President Gallagher to add it to the agenda, and, and I think it was a wonderful presentation by the, the groups earlier, and, and the effort around town has been outstanding. I work for a large corporation, as many people do, I'm sure, and annually, we have, across the board, we have diversity and inclusion training. And I've, I've gone through about 15 years of, of training. It's shifted over the years. It's, it's not a big module to take, but it is, it's extensive. And, and everyone who's in training and education knows that education becomes skills and skills become good practice. And the reason I wanted to put this on here, because I think it's timely, but also, while it's, it's good that, you know, town employees are having maybe harassment and inclusion training, which is a little bit different than diversity training, I think. I, I don't think any of our committees and some of our extended, extended town pieces have the same level of training available to them. And so what I was looking for, Mr. Dutton, was to see if we could look into, to see what's available for that type of training, whether it be, you know, departments, all departments and all committees. And so it becomes part of the annual process, just like we do the ethics training or conflict intervention training, where, where our statement of financial interest. But then it becomes a, a routine for all employees and all committee members to go through this, because I think if people go through this, you start to see the nuance of conversation and you get into the practice of see something, say something, and, and other very positive effects. So, so I, you didn't speak to that directly, and maybe you don't have an answer for that, but that's what I was looking for.
I, I think I'd only, I would only add, that probably comes under the category of things that we could, we could actually do a lot better on. And, and if there, if we can, if we can get the appropriate training and, and add a module to, to what we currently do, then, then certainly I'm, I'm all for that. And, and certainly asking our, our volunteers to, to participate. Sometimes, you know, as, as you know, as counselors, asking volunteers to put aside more time over and above their, their committee assignments to, to participate in some of the trainings can be a challenge, but, but in this case, I think that's, that's, it's probably a, a very appropriate and important piece that they should, they should participate in.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Mr. Dutton, if, if there were, and, and I'm just focusing right now on, on volunteer committees, if there were, let's call it an incident with a committee member, do they serve at your pleasure that, that you could just say, hey, you, you're no longer on that committee because you did something pretty egregious and that's not what we stand for as a town? Is that, is that possible? You have that power?
Unfortunately, well, either fortunately or unfortunately, I, I don't necessarily have that power. I do have the ability to remove committee members who, who miss meetings on a routine basis without, without any, any excuse. But it, it is a challenge to, for me, as the appointing authority, it's a challenge for me to try to, you know, and I, I'm not saying that this has been a problem, but I'm saying the challenge.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just speaking hypothetically. I, I don't know that there's any problem. So that would be a charter change that would have to happen.
Correct, that's a charter change. And, and, and from my perspective, because I'm the one that has to assess the risk to, to the town about, you know, anything we do, the risk, there is a risk associated with, with a, a board or committee member, because they are essential, they are considered in the eyes of the law of municipal employee. So we cover them under insurance, you know, certain insurance policies, but, but if, if some board or committee member is, is acting in a harassing staff, harassing the public, and, 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 and there's not a whole lot that, that I can do about it, then, then it becomes a potential liability for the town. And that's, that's where, that's where there's sort of a little missing link, so to speak, that, that we need to sort of fix, probably through a charter change.
Okay, and then moving on to employees, were, were you to find out a town employee were, was responding in a way that would be considered demeaning and insulting, derogatory, whatever words you want to use to somebody, whether it be based on their gender identification, their racial identification, et cetera, et cetera, any of those, any of those classes, you have a lot more leeway with an actual employee of the town, subject to collective bargaining, of course, but you, you could, you could address that more easily.
Oh, absolutely.
And, and I'm assuming you would.
Oh, absolutely, and have.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. So any items for next meeting? If you have any off the top of your head, you can voice it now or reach out to the town manager and let him know.
Mr. President, I, I would only add one item if I could, or actually one comment, not an item. God forbid, I'm not going to add more items to my list. But I just, because counselor comments come at the end of the meeting, I don't participate in that. I did want to use the opportunity to thank Counselor Gallagher for, for guiding. From my perspective, Counselor Gallagher has really done a fabulous job guiding this council through a really difficult time over the past several months. So, so my thanks to him, and that's, that's, that's all I wanted to point out.
Thank you. Thank you.
Would agree. So, Mr. Dutton, what I'd like to have on the next manager report, I believe that there was a survey sent out to area businesses in regards to, I'm paraphrasing, what we can do under the current COVID situation. I'd, I'd like to see what are the results of that survey, and then, more importantly, what, what's the town doing to try to help businesses across the board manage these uncharted waters? So I'd like, like to see that, especially, it'll be our August meeting, we're going to be in the midst of summer. I don't want to miss the vote on anything that we can do proactively. The other thing, and I don't know if this is in the report, but we did have a standing item in regards to committee and department presentations. I know that's kind of gone to the wayside with, with, you know, March, the COVID thing. I'd like to get that back. I don't know where we, I, I can work with you on that, but I'd like to get that back, if not in August, September, as an ongoing item in regards to having the committees and departments in front of us, because I think that bears a lot of fruit for us to find out what's going on and also the public that is watching either on Zoom or on Facebook.
Nope, we will, we will do that for the August meeting. That's, that's, we're, we're ready to get back on track.
Great. All right, thank you. Um, I don't have anything for discussions, any committee reports? Okay. Seeing none, moving legislation for action. Okay, Order 0FY2006, 62, excuse me. Bridgewater State University has donated monies to be distributed equally between the fire, police, and roadway departments. These funds may be expended without further appropriation. Acceptance of this gift will allow the town to expend the funds for their stated purpose as part of the university's municipal aid initiative, with the town of Bridgewater donation of $55,000 received. Mr. Dutton, do you have anything to add to this before I?
I do not have, nope, I do not have anything to add. The university's been, been generous with this over the last several years, and this is a continuation of that.
Okay, so entertain a motion, okay? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the university, obviously, for this donation and ask you, Mr. President, at some point to be able to highlight also the scholarships they afford Bridgewater and Rainham students who choose to attend BSU, which is another great generous donation they give back to the community.
Absolutely. Mr. Wood.
Thank you. I want to thank the university. If anyone's reading the papers these days, we all know that all the universities around the United States are under extreme financial stress at this point with trying to plan what to do and whatnot. As Mr. Fitzgibbons said, you know, the university has been a, a very good partner, and I, I think that I really appreciate the gift. They have done this several years, and it, and it speaks so highly of how much of a partnership we have between the town and the university. Thank you.
Any other questions? Before I move on, I apologize, the Budget and Finance Committee voted 3-0 to recommend. Finance Committee voted 5-0 to recommend. All right, this, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mrs. Lush.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Susan.
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodis.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Moving on to Order OFY20-063, acceptance of donation Central Square. Two donations of $500 received for the maintenance of the town's Central Square Park and Recreation. The Budget and Finance Committee at their June 30th meeting voted 3-0 to recommend approval. Finance Committee voted on June 30th, 5-0 to recommend approval. Mr. Dutton, anything to add?
I do not, other than to say thank you very much.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So, second.
Okay, so moved in second. Mr. Chase, I believe you. Do you have anything you want to add?
I would just like to acknowledge the generosity of the donor, that's Cecilia Braxton, and I think it's a, a really tremendous effort on her part, and it's greatly appreciated.
Mr. Susan.
Echoed that, same thing.
Okay, any other comments? Hey, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodis.
Yes.
Mr. Susan.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mrs. Lush.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Nine in favor and none against.
Moving on to Resolution RFY20-010, a resolution supporting COVID-19 state funding for school districts, whereas if schools are to be reopened this fall in the midst of a COVID-19 pandemic, it is responsibility of each school district to do so safely and responsibly, and whereas it is responsibility of the state to ensure that each school district is able to pay for enormous additional staffing, transportation, and material expenses required to do this, and whereas the state cannot expect mandatory COVID-19 safety guidelines to be followed without also ensuring that each school district has the funds required to implement these guidelines. Therefore, let it be resolved that the state must guarantee every school district full reimbursement for whatever COVID-19 expenses are required to follow the state mandates. We must ensure a statewide school reopening that is safe, responsible, and equitable. There can be no unfunded mandates for COVID-19. This measure was not referred to any committee. 14 days have elapsed per Section 18 of the Council Rules and Procedures. Therefore, this measure may be finally considered this evening.
Motion to approve.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Mr. Fitzgibbons, any?
I think it was Mr. Gallagher and I who introduced it. I, I don't know who else signed on, but.
Yep, I have, I, I have that, yep.
Yeah, and so I, I just say, you know, that's pretty clear. We all know that we're dealing with unfunded mandates in, in special education, we're dealing with unfunded Chapter 71 transportation money. If the state throws this onto our regional school district, we, we might as well just throw our hands up in disgust at that point in time. I mean, this is just, if they're going to mandate opening and they're going to mandate all of these safety measures, it's incumbent upon the state to find that money. Thank you.
Mr. Gallagher?
No, I agree. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mrs. Lush.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Susan.
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodis.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
I don't have anything for old business, new business. Order 0FY21-008, transfer order capital appropriation for Highway Barn. The old Highway Barn located at 80 Spring Street is abandoned and is in disrepair. The measure allows for the town manager to demo the building and make the necessary improvements to site or adjacent town-owned land that may be able to be covered by any remaining proceeds of this appropriation. Mr. Mr. Dutton, anything else to add to this?
No, I believe this is something the, the council has talked about now for some time, that the building is, is empty or, or empty and ready to be, ready to be demolished.
I will entertain a motion to disposition.
A mo- motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
Second. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, this requires, does it require a roll call vote?
All votes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, all votes have to be taken by roll call. Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodis.
Yes.
Mr. Susan.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Wood. Mr. Wood? You're muted.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mrs. Lush.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Nine in favor and none against.
Okay. Moving on to Council Order 0FY21-009, transfer order capital appropriations for school funding. This measure appropriates funds for the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District in addition to those already enacted in the town's annual budget as recommended by the town's financial committee and approved by the town council. and approved by the town council on June 2020. As in the town's preceding year, FY 2020 budget order 0FY20-010, this order appropriates supplemental monies for the district's needs and is funded through the town's existing capital fund resource. The measure aligns with the town's current revenue share model within Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District.
Motion approved. A motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you. Within this, within this order, we do have a need to try to expedite this as quickly as possible to help the school district in regards to a multitude of challenges they currently have. What I'd like to do is, is I'm going to call a special meeting on July 28th at 7:00 PM. I'm under the understanding that it'll give enough time for advertising as well as both committees to review and give their recommendations to come back. I will send out that information, working with the town council clerk. I would also implore the Finance and Budget and Finance Committee to take these up as quickly as possible. Okay. That being, yes, Mr. Gallagher.
If you could, one piece you have to do is ask the council clerk to call for the public hearing for the next meeting also.
Okay.
Get to schedule the public hearing for our meeting on July 28th.
Okay, if you could do that, then that would be great. Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. All right, citizens' comments. And again, I'd like to reiterate same approach in regards to open forum. Do we have any citizens who would like to comment? And I don't see anyone. Do you see anyone?
I don't see anyone. Let me double check.
Okay.
Nope, I don't see anybody.
All righty, I'm going to move to council comments, and I'm going to do the best I can to follow the way it should be if we were sitting in the council chambers. But if I mess it up, please bear with me. I am going to go...
I'm number one.
But Council Fitzgibbons, you don't know if I'm going from the right or the left?
I don't, I don't.
But as you were the first to speak up, Council Fitzgibbons.
Well, first of all, I want to echo what the town manager said about Mr. Gallagher running these meetings and then just convey it on to you, Mr. George. Running these meetings in this time is, I can't imagine the difficulty of juggling people, looking around to see who wants to talk, making sure public participation happens. Thank you both for running great meetings, and I really do appreciate that. Secondly, obviously, I want to thank BCCR and the three presenters tonight, Mr. Baumgartner, Ms. Phillips, and Mr. Black for a very thorough presentation on various issues and various requests they have for the council. I look forward to the information they're going to be sending us. And finally, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the town manager, the health agent, and the building official for moving through these steps of reopening in a way that we're trying to say yes as a town to businesses, to your point earlier, Mr. George, that we're trying to say yes, how can we help you open and get things done, rather than the easy response that often is the response from government? No, that's not by the rules, we can't do it that way. And so, Mr. Dutton, Mr. Badger, and I always pronounce his name wrong, so I'll just say Steve, have done a great job doing that, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Columbotus?
I have nothing to my thank.
Okay, Mr. Souza?
No, I just let it be today. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rushton?
Thank you. I just had four quick thank yous as well. First of all, just thank you to all the town councillors for having the confidence in voting to help the town and support councillor George over the next year. I wanted to welcome and congratulate back councillor Wood. Also like to thank councillor Gallagher for his service to the town and to the council, and to my other councillors' comments for his work through this time in COVID. And lastly, I wanted to thank Mark Lindy for his service to the town on the town council. Certainly look forward to him continuing to serve the town of Bridgewater. My thoughts are that he's been really nothing but a class act with his time on the council and even during the election. And so with that, have everyone have a great week.
Thank you. Mr. Wood?
Thank you. You guys have done a tremendous job during this crisis. So, thanks to everybody. It's good to be back. Thank you to Mark Lindy for stepping up during my absence. Many people don't know this, but while I was absent from the council, I continued to be involved and was a member of the Finance Committee working on the budget and other financial matters for almost six months now. Income is a wonderful group of people whose role, I think, is greatly underappreciated, underappreciated. I have to say, taking a step back from the council and seeing the town council from that point of view has given me inspiration for some policy changes that you'll hear about over the next few months. These changes are intended to improve communication and add transparency to the town council process. One of the things I intend to do also over the next few months is to, once again, host a workshop, financial workshops that we did last September. I think that greatly improved our financial communication between the two towns, the school district. We had a number of different financial experts in those discussions. We ran three revenue. And under the stress that we're seeing now, I think... My election to the town council. My focus is on district projects, and that's the primary reason for having district representation. The voters should decide who will represent their neighborhood. Side of Precinct 6 tried with repeated effort at many levels to use fuzzy math and imaginary numbers to disrupt the election process and stop me from being elected. You may never know why someone who doesn't live in the precinct is trying to influence how the neighborhood votes. For the past few months, I've heard that I've served 10, 11, or even 12 years on the council. And that's a pretty neat trick to serve for 12 years on a body that's only existed for nine. Add math, they didn't stop the outside voices. Even before I pulled papers to run, the outside voices were trying to find ways to stop democracy and stop me from running for the seat. Voices from outside of Precinct 6 tried to influence the election by saying I was unethical and then criticized me for being silent against their unwarranted access. The math is simple. Districts 3, 5, and 6 are in the same election cycle. The first time Pete and I were elected, the ballot before the voter said for three years. The second time Pete and I were elected, the ballot before the voter said for three years. The third time Pete and I were elected, the ballot before the voter said for three years. Simple math, 3 plus 3 plus 3 is 9, not 10, or 11, or 12, as the voices from outside of Precinct 6 tried to make the voters believe using fuzzy math and imaginary numbers. Pete and I are both here legally with our integrity and ethics fully intact. The will of the people inside of Precinct 6 was the only voice that was needed to be heard. I thank them for their support, and I look forward to being their representative again. Good night.
Councillor Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to thank Mr. Lindy for his service on the council over recent months, and I agree with earlier comments. I look forward to his participation in various endeavors throughout the town in the future.
Thank you. Councillor Loesch?
I would like to echo what Mr. Chase said about Mr. Lindy. Thank you for joining us and looking forward to your participation. And that is it for this evening.
Councillor Gallagher?
Yeah, a few things tonight. Congratulations to new president councillor George and to the vice president Matt Rushton. And thank you guys for the opportunity to serve as president these past 14 months. And maybe I'll be back again sometime. But I also want to welcome back councillor Wood to the council and for a spirited election in the town of Bridgewater. And congratulate Mr. George and Pete Columbotus on coming back to the council. Also, we all should, we all certainly do owe a great gratitude to former councillor Mark Lind for stepping up to the plate last December to fill in the vacancy, which ended up being an extra two months simply because of the delay in the election. So that's how I think it's always important that when there is a vacancy, that it does become filled, because you never know what could happen. And I think that District 6 was certainly served very, very well for these past seven, eight, nine months with Mr. Lind stepping in to serve as councillor during that time. I hope everybody had a great stay-at-home 4th of July this year and enjoyed the unofficial fireworks that went off throughout the town. I heard many of them. Hopefully, there were no injuries. I haven't heard of any, so I think everything went off pretty well. Hopefully, I'm sure next year we'll be back with a full parade, and the 4th of July committee continues to look for donations and is already gearing up for next year. And they certainly deserve a great deal of gratitude for continuing to offer the spirit of the 4th of July, even though everything was pretty much canceled this year. They offered a home decoration patriotic contest this year for homes that wanted to enter. There were drive-bys that people could go by these certain homes in Bridgewater that were published on Facebook and elsewhere, I believe, to vote on your favorite or most patriotic or decorated home for the 4th of July. I did not enter my house, but I'm sure I probably would have done very well. But I want to congratulate, I believe it was number 78 Cherry Street that won the contest this year. I think that's in District 5, I hope I got it right, or 4, District 4, I believe. And congratulate the town on the town manager and his staff and everybody involved in our Phase 3 reopening of the town of Bridgewater. That's great. I never thought I'd say this, was great to see gridlock traffic in downtown again, because it's glad to see everybody out and about and trying to get here and there, and there's still more, more opening to do. But it's nice to see the businesses being very creative in their business plans and practices to accommodate the customers during what are a lot of accommodations they had to adjust to make, just so they could reopen in a safe, safe manner for the people of the town. So that is it for tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. So I just have a couple of things. First, I'd like to thank the voters of Precinct 3 for giving me an opportunity to serve another term and continue the work that we have done collectively and keep going that way as well. I'd also like to thank the town council for electing me president. Hopefully, I will deliver on all expectations in regards to holding the seat. But I also want to say, you know, thank you to my family for giving me the flexibility to be able to continue trying to give back to a community that has given us all so much. We are in very unique times right now. And what I'm trying to do is to keep and continue the leadership of Dennis in his role in working towards a better Bridgewater. What that entails is yet to be determined. We're going to need all hands on deck when it comes to getting us through not only COVID, but just getting our town. We're in good shape. I think, as Mr. Dutton said, we can always be better, and I think we'd all agree with that, and we're going to work at it as best we can. And that's going to be one of my main goals. I also want to say thank you to Mr. Lindy for stepping up and filling the role. Mr. Lindy, again, I enjoyed working with you, and I fully expect for you to stay involved in Bridgewater in any way you possibly can. So thank you for that. The last thing I want to say is I would like to ask all the councillors to set over the next week, send me three committees that you'd like to serve on, because I know that's one of the duties that I have is in regards to committee assignments. So I'd like to get those done as quickly as possible so we can keep things going in a smooth manner. We do not have an executive session, so that I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? This recalls, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you very much, and everyone have a great evening.
Thank you.